We are going to call the meeting for order. We have everybody here except Calla and...
Calla said she was not the agenda.
Do we have additions to the agenda? Everybody can see, we have three additions.
Yep, we have probably the two personnel.
We have a motion to adopt agenda. A motion by Cheryl.
Second.
Second by Deb. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The district is proud of Diane Miller-Girtkin, Mary Line Decker, and Jennifer Wirth for being selected for the Leadership and Education Excellence Award, L-E-E-A. The horse team placed fourth at the Region FFA contest in London. They will be advancing to state competition in April. Team members were Bailey, Weller, Asia, Sang Kyo, Sam Malis, Emily Porter, Matt Hartsfield, and Brittany Demo. Congratulations to the team. We are then on a public comment. Do we have anybody here for public comment? Okay. Anyone here for public comment? Approval of the minutes of the September 23, 2014 regular board meeting. We have a motion by Deb.
Second.
And a second by Mark. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All say no. Then we are going to take a little diversion here and we're going to work Max in for his part right now. We also have another thing. At 7:15, if we're not done, we will be calling to recess for some parents that are up here to get down for parents tonight. And if we're not done, we'll be back in about 20 minutes or so. So, Max, why don't you go ahead here?
Are you going to do business item number one at this time? Did you want me to comment on that?
Well, let's go to business item number one and then you do yours at the same time. Good idea. Business item number one. Review and consider approval to authorize the superintendent to sign facility use agreement with Region 5A and Region 3A.
Basically, we had to do that starting at the meet last winter was the first time that our district did. At that time, it was just Region 5A because the fall events were already in pass. What's happened is the State High School League has gotten concerned that the IRS is watching them and any tournaments and things like that. The State High School League doesn't want those people working those events to be considered employees of the State High School League, therefore having to pay taxes, so on and so forth. Well, a long story short, like all of our officials that are working here tonight now have to fill out W-9s and things like that. Well, one of the things that they've put in place is making the school sign this agreement that basically we're allowing the State High School League to run their events on our facilities and it's part of those auditing purposes and things like that. We can't host any home section playoff games in anything that we would do without allowing the region to do that. So, we really don't have a whole lot of choice unless you want to tell your athletes and fans that they have to go away even if they are in a home event. The reason it's Region 3A, there are some events that Region 3A administrates that we belong to. The only one that would directly impact is football and then Region 5A would be like baseball, basketball, softball. We're in Region 3A for some other activities, but not where on the road all the time for those, so.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to sign the facility use agreement.
I'll second that.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All say no. Now for Squeable, can we work Max in now?
So, along with that, gearing up a lot of things for the fall postseason tournament playing, making sure there's a bunch of deadlines with the State High School League that have to meet prior to preseason with rosters and it really sometimes seems redundant, but then you've got to recertify things going into postseason and all that. So, getting ready to do that. Our volleyball team's competing tonight. If we win, we will be the West Central Conference South Half Champions. And I'm not up on the history enough to know, except for I don't know if it has ever happened. But at any rate, so volleyball team's having a successful season. The football sub-district has changed from what I reported last time since we've moved to the Central Minnesota Conference. We have now, as a district, decided to, most schools in the West Central Conference preferred that we also play the Central Minnesota schools in football as well. So, we're going to be with more of those schools in football starting next fall. I had my first Central Minnesota Conference meeting. Their administrative superintendents met and approved officially for Painzold to join the Central Minnesota Conference starting next fall. So, that's officially been approved. It was a great meeting. I can now see why they've had such longevity and consistency and continuity. They meet every month as opposed to once a sports season. But I mean, the topics, they, you know, at the end, they finish with a round table where every school district can bring up items of concern or issues or anything that, for instance, one thing was brought up, well, when you host an event, you know, that was a football game that was taking place at one of the schools and they didn't have a place for the opponents to change had they wanted to. And so, those types of things are brought up. And just an example of the collaboration of those schools, we're looking forward to working with those. It's hard to believe, but the dance starts on Monday or any winter smarts are going to be kicking off before you know it. Next school board meeting, I probably won't be here. There'll be an item that will be on the agenda, which will be a resolution for me to apply for a State High School League grant. What that grant is, is the State High School League grants money to schools based on the percentage of free and reduced students that you have in your district. And those dollars can be used to help offset participation fees or whatever. We just basically put it into our general fund, but it's only available if you have a resolution from the school board saying it's okay to ask for those dollars. So, that will be on the agenda next time. The deadline is November, so we have to have that among the next agenda. Otherwise, we have a couple winter coaching positions that we're going close to filling and we'll have some candidates for those two. Not sure if there's any other questions for me?
Max, you know when the playoff games will be?
Yeah.
Without looking at a calendar, volleyball will be on the, well, the 21st is a Tuesday. It's been the 25th, I think if that's a Friday, that'll be the first round. Volleyball subsections will be taking place, which is either the 25th or 26th. I'm not sure which is a Friday. Football will either be Tuesday, the 21st, or Saturday must be the 26th. So, that's dependent upon the results of Wednesday's game for football.
So, I'm assuming that if you win the game on Wednesday, then you would have a bye the first round.
Correct. There's seven teams in our section for football. So, a win on Wednesday would be a first round bye and then we would host a game on Saturday. If we lose, there's a possibility that we would host on Tuesday. And then Cross-Country Conference meet is today and then their section meet is coming up as well. That'll actually be at New London Spicer Little Grove Golf Course. Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay, we will continue on business items. Review and consider approval of the World's Best Workforce Plan.
Again, this is not a policy. This is just a plan that I'm looking for approval from the board. But then new state law with World's Best Workforce, really if you take a look at the first five bullets there where it talks about, first paragraph where it says World's Best Workforce Plan is a comprehensive, long-term strategic plan to support improved teaching and learning with the ultimate goal of creating world's best workforce. It's interesting that this legislation really didn't turn into what it was. It didn't start the way that it ended. I guess I shouldn't be that surprised, but that's what happened. But the five goals are all great goals and really those are all students are ready for kindergarten, close the achievement gap. That's where our MMR score has been coming in. Don will talk a little bit about that. Also, I should mention that she can't preherp piece up until about 7 o'clock. So, you know, we'll probably keep moving through the whole meeting until hopefully Don will get here as quick as she can because she had a couple other commitments and then she'll go through some data and that might be the last thing on the agenda at that time. It also says all students in third grade achieve grade level literacy, all students attain career and college readiness before graduating from high school, and all students graduate from high school. Those are really the five bullets of the world's best workforce that every school board needs to really approve a plan for this. Some of the plans are very lengthy plans that I've seen from schools. Some of them, I think Melrose is about the length of paragraph. So, I think you can do this however you want. When we met with committee and what the state or what the state has done now, we used to have have a curriculum advisory committee. That is no longer in effect. We don't need a curriculum advisory committee anymore so that we really, I used a lot of those members to start the World's Best Workforce Plan and next year you'll hear me, instead of talking about having a committee of the curriculum development piece, it'll be the World's Best Workforce Plan that I'll bring and ask for a member of the board to be on. Then it just goes through the measures and talks about the school insight progress. You know, it will annually establish district insight goals to meet the academic needs of all students. We're doing that and as we go through the strategic plan, I'll start that right after the election in November, we'll start putting the committee together to do that. That'll all fit into this. But the metrics that are studied annually to achieve the reduction in the subgroups large enough to warrant study. We don't have some subgroups that warrant a lot of study on our part. We just simply don't have enough diversity, other than our free and reduced, we do have a lot of diversity in that area. Kindergarten readiness is measured by the K-Roundup Checklist, Classroom Assessments, EAMS, WEB, and STAR. Percent of grade level literacy in the third grade is measured by the MCA's and best benchmarking results, we'll use those. Student career and college readiness before graduation, this will be done with the Senior Exit Survey and may include college application rate, financial applications, aid rates, and post-secondary plan. And then graduation rate is bound in the multiple measure reporting system and then review of the results of the EXPLORER Plan and ACT test. So, we'll look at all the test data when we do this. One of the things that's happening right now, and we're just about done and I'll bring that to the board also, this will be kind of the plan we use, but we're also putting a number of procedures together also. So, we'll come to the board with some rubrics that will help us also when we talk about is the district moving in the direction we want. So, I'll bring that to the board. We're just finishing up some percentages. We want to make sure that we have those right. But once they're done, I'll bring that piece to the board also and the board can have some discussion about how that looks. But every year then, we'll bring the rubric forward and we'll say this is where we are with these types of things that we're telling that we're going to measure. So, that'll be an annual thing and we'll have to do that annually in front of the community. So, we'll call, we'll do it during a board meeting. I don't think there's anything that says it has to be a special meeting. But during the board meeting, we'll also talk about that particular piece and that will be an agenda item. Also talks about the district insight goals. Through site goals, benchmarks, we'll establish reading and math and science goals again and that'll come out in the rubric that we've talked about. Then it goes on to talk about the assessment and evaluation of students. It talks about EAMS, WEB, STAR, MCA test scores, our practice tests that we do, the ASVAB. Right now, because the ACT is coming in and we do a lot of testing already, we're not going to require the ASVAB. I think there's good things about it. We're certainly going to encourage students to do it, but it won't be a requirement at this point. Plan and EXPLORER tests are the eighth grade and the 10th grade tests that are really the pre-test for the ACT. So, we'll really get an idea where the kids are at during that. I know the EXPLORER Plan also has an inventory that talks about what their job interest might be. I don't know if the plan does or not, Lori.
Yes, they both do.
They both do.
They both do. Maybe it's more detailed as they go up in grade level.
And then, of course, everybody will be taking the ACTs. There's some very good benefits for that and you know, all the students will have the ACT paid for through the state, so they'll all get that score. Then it talks about periodic review and evaluation. It just really, we're going to do that on an annual basis and yearly basis to make sure our curriculum is appropriate and instruction is going the way we are. It's really about adapting to what our data shows us. So, when Don goes through the test scores, you'll see some areas where she'll say, we need to do better in this area. Well, now we have to relook at that and say, what are we going to change so that that test score can go up and student achievement goes up. We'll look at the educational effective practices of our teachers and that really, another project that we're working on right now, and we're just about done with it, is the Teacher Performance and Evaluation Plan. I still believe the best way to improve student achievement is to help our teachers become better at what they do. And that plan is just about done right now. So, that'll be coming to the board. I'm hoping possibly at the next meeting for the board to look at that and approve that plan also. It hasn't been looked at for a few years, so it's a perfect time to do it. And we do need to meet the state requirements for our teacher evaluation plan. Annual budget talks about the 2% general education. That's the way it is right now. It's mandated by state law. Then district reporting requirements. The annual report for this plan will be published in the school website. The report will include the following, really all of our data. So, that anybody can go there and see how the district is doing in regards to student achievement. And then it talks about what the school board will do. And again, these are things that are required in the state law. You review as necessary student achievement goals, local assessment outcomes, approve strategies and practice for improving curriculum instruction. Review the district's student achievement goals, benchmarks, and improvement plans. Improve the submission of the electronic summary of the World's Best Workforce Plan. So, I'll bring that to the board. And then oversee the World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee. And again, my recommendation is that we've kind of changed the curriculum committee into the World's Best Workforce Committee. The members that have, state online committee have all agreed that they would become part of that. So, we'll bring that board. So, that's kind of the nutshell. Like I said, there are some districts that have written 40-page documents on this. I don't think it's necessary. This is something that I think we need to keep simple and say, it's all about really those five bullets about student achievement and how we're going to do better, how we're going to get our kids ready, be ready for college and ready for the job for us once they graduate from high school. So, what I'm really looking for is just an approval of this plan. It doesn't, like I said, it's not a policy. It doesn't go on our policy book or anything, but I would like to know that we, the board has approved the plan. You certainly can approve it this time right now. I'd recommend it. It's fairly simple document or you could table it and have it back at the next meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the World's Best Workforce Plan. Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no.
This really doesn't do anything different than what we're doing right now.
I'll observe my comments. It's just that what the bill said when they wrote it and what this says, honestly, it's not even...
They're two different things.
Totally different. It's kind of crazy.
It was never intended to do what it did, but that's all right. It's not asking us to do anything that we shouldn't be doing, so.
Then we're on to number three. Review and consider approval of agreement with Alexandria Technical and Community College.
If you take a look in the addendum, this again is a PSEO tuition agreement with Alexandria Technical and Community College. Cost is $189.76 per credit. Certainly allows us to give our students the opportunity to college credit and I would certainly recommend that we continue this.
A motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Lou. Any further discussion? Remember, public comment again on this one. I missed it on number two, so if there's public comment on that one, any public comment? Okay. Any further discussion here at the board? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Then number four, we are going to hold because our presenter is not here at the moment. So, we are going to move to personnel. Let's see. Review and consider approval to hire Danielle.
Danielle.
Danielle Leukum as our school nurse detective October 23, 2014.
Now, this particular position is she does not have her four-year degree. So, at this point, she has her two-year RN right now. She is working towards her four-year degree. There's a little bit of paperwork she needed to do. She was currently the sock center nurse. We are not putting her on the teacher's salary schedule right now until she completes the four-year degree. So, we do have a little bit of work to get her into a place, but right now we put her on the support staff contract just for now. We're hoping that in a couple of years, she will finish her four-year piece and then be able to get all the other certifications that she needs. Current time, we're looking at starting her at $23 an hour, which is about the same that she was making from sock center, but not as much as she will get once she gets on the teacher's contract.
A motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by David. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Review and consider approval to hire Sue Teicher as the POS program assistant detective October 15, 2014.
As we put the POS program in and, I don't know if you want to speak to that, Matt? That'd be great.
Yeah, it's a program's drawing, so we just need to get our hours covered, so maybe more coming in the future requests.
We have a motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Okay, then we got number three. Review and consider approval of resignation of Mike Cash, maintenance position effective October 24, 2014.
He'll be doing, I guess I'd say, as I would wish him well. We certainly hate to see him go. Like all of ours that have resigned his position, but he's kind of going to business for himself from understanding his and his passion is, so we're excited for him.
A motion by David. Second by Mark. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Passed. Review and consider approval of resignation of James Pastor, fitness center position effective immediately.
Anything?
Yeah, Jim wants to be freed up to travel and he still wants a sub, so we need to eliminate or resign that position, then he'll still be on our sub program. So, yeah, Jim's been just a huge asset to our program for over 10 years, so, but he's still be in the mix, so he's been kind of backed down to a little bit now and anyhow, so.
Okay. A motion by Lou. Second by Deb. That would be a question. Motion by, second by Mark. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Okay, I think if you're ready, then we're going to...
You're ready? You need a couple minutes? We could have a couple other reports if you need a little...
Okay. So, then we are going to move to informational reports. Elementary school principals report.
Some of my comments were going to be based on what Don was presenting. So, if you have any questions after that, certainly I can try to answer any of those. Not a whole lot going on. Tomorrow, we have our two-hour early release and we have at the elementary school, our teachers will be working on a program called Post-Reading. And we have our fourth grade teachers and Maria Rasmussen coming over to do a presentation on that. And then we have Halman Wolf and Chad Campbell will be doing some training on the Chromebooks that we have. So, we've been fortunate to have people on staff who've been able to step in and do some in-service in-house and then have really resonate well with the staff and helps to save some funds as we don't have to bring in people from other areas. So, that's really about all I have. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. So, good. You could probably hang a little closer if you might, because we might have some for the rest of your report. Now, we have the secondary principals report.
We've had, I've had the opportunity to go to a couple different principal information workshops. One was Project Lead the Way. We took our teachers and saw some very interesting breakout sessions. Did some talking with some different schools that are currently doing the Principals of Engineering Program that we're looking at implementing next year. May have some different ideas as far as where to implement it. So, we're gonna, I'm working with a couple of the departments to unpackage those and see which area of study it would best work, but definitely seeing the progress and the positive feedback that other districts have received. So, just kind of looking at how it falls into the whole scope. One other interesting thing I found out is the college credit for the Project Lead the Way classes is very different. Students can pick one of four or five different colleges to have the transcript written from. So, like if they're going to U of M, they can actually apply to U of M for the Project Lead the Way credit. If they're going to St. Cloud, they can actually apply to St. Cloud for the Project Lead the Way credit. So, it reduces the number of transcripts they have and just makes that more of a fluid transition for those credits, which I thought that was kind of neat. They didn't realize how that transferred until going to that workshop. Also, they have, through the Carl Perkins money, which this workshop also showed, there are some really advantageous sites for students to use to look at how credits transfer, mostly with our CTE program. So, those classes offered through Land Trans, our computer lit classes, our ed classes and those. So, we'll be working with our juniors and seniors if they're taking those classes to see because each college takes those in a little differently so that they'll be able to know what they're looking at when they're starting to apply for school. So, it was a very informative conference. Also, I went to a meeting down at Ridgewater and they are, as we kind of move forward into next year, possibly this semester, they are starting a college-high school cooperative partnership with some online courses. How Infinity was primarily a high school program and had a couple of college classes you could take for a little extra money. They're calling the program ROC, R-O-C-H, and it is a college online program for students. And it's based on a dollar amount per student versus a total amount. So, it might be something to look at in the future. It has a smaller number of courses, but all the courses offer our college credit and it would allow that flexibility in student schedules as well as the option for other college credits. So, something we're going to look more into as we kind of move through the year. Minnesota Weed then is coming up. Jen Andrus and Joan Nutter will be taking 22 students down to the cities for that. And we will be doing as part of our day tomorrow with all students is our partnership with Allstate is the Two Hands, Two Eyes on the Road Campaign to help students be better drivers and commit to not texting and making good choices while they're on the road. So, if you happen to see the website, if you apply and commit to doing Two Hands, Two Eyes, you can commit to it every day and we have the possibility, if we get enough commitments, that we could get some money into the building, but also just hope our kids understand making good choices is important. And then on October 31, that early out, we are going to be having Maria Rasmussen work with our staff on primarily the nonfiction reading because we feel that is something, right now they're working on their PLCs with a book called End Note and we're going to kind of incorporate that into the nonfiction reading so that our full staff can use that across the printout areas. That's kind of summary of what's going on over here. It's been busy. Any questions that you might have for me? Don, I'll be bringing up the testing scores, which that was kind of hurt here too, but...
I do have a question on Project Lead the Way.
Yes.
And the part of setting that up was a committee, including people from industry. We've kind of moving forward on that?
We had a meeting two weeks ago, I think, where we had our teachers speaking. We'll be having another group meeting, kind of as far as creating a committee, probably in about a month and a half. So, yes, that kind of initial group, but I'm going to open it up to anyone, any businessman or business partners that want to be involved in that. So, hopefully we'll gain some as we move through the year. Okay? I had a question. We thought it would be, so you said they could transfer the credit for college to whatever college they wanted? Not whatever. They have a list. Okay. Okay? And it's unique. Like U of M, the kids have three months to apply for the credit and it'll be a U of M credit. St. Cloud gives this, excuse me, gives the students three years to apply for the credit. You know, so there's a number of different colleges across Minnesota that apply as well as nationally. So, it's a different way they've created partnerships with colleges is what they've done. So, it, you know, can play in the student's favor. My question was, potentially, we would have college credit through Lead the Way at ninth grade level. Correct. At that time, they would have to decide what college? Well, that's what, and keep in mind, if I would get... if I would give it from the University of Minnesota and it's on that transcript and I decided to go to UMD, UMD will accept the transcript from U of M. So they can, so they don't have to know. But that is the reason where St. Cloud State has said, you know what, how can you expect a ninth grader to know exactly where they're going to go to school? Let's give them some time. So that's why their criteria, they gave them more time to kind of think about that and see.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, would this be a good time to move?
Yes, I, okay. Because today has been like a really busy day. I didn't have it printed out for you. We'll send it all to you, but sitting there it might be difficult. So I always am the one that makes you busy, I'm sorry.
You might want to use your mic.
As I said, I apologize for not having it thrown off. Today's been a little bit of everything going on. I will send this to Bob and he will forward it on to you so you can take a look at all the information at your leisure. We also, I will send him, he probably recognized this from last year, I will also send you last year so you can do a comparison, because that's, that's part of what we need to do. So I have them both, I'll send them to Bob later on this evening and he'll forward them on to you. Test results are out across the state of Minnesota and everybody's kind of excited about it and trying to figure out where we are. One of the, one of the things that we had in looking at it was, we've kind of had a really big shift as far as what we need to know for 2014. We've got some, this would be the tests we took last spring being 2014. We had the MCA III in math for grades three through eight and 11. It was the first year that MCA III was for the 11th graders. MCA III for reading, second year with the test. If you remember last year, everybody in the state took a big dive. We all figured it out a little bit and we're gonna show better in that. MCA III, science in fifth, eighth and high school. All of the reading and the math are used for our AYP, which is Showing Annual Yearly Progress, and the MMR score. MMR is given to all schools even though the designation that we'll kind of give you the slides for only applies to Title I schools. So it only goes at elementary school. All the tests were given online and the last one is kind of one that everybody here needs to be aware of. Because the state changed the rules one more time on us. For the high school tests, for the reading and the math in grades 10 and 11, there was no requirement that said they needed to meet or exceed on the MCA or take the grad test. There were other pathways that were going to be there. So we decided we would look at it and we covered everybody by giving all the juniors last year the ASVAB. So that was a test that was going to cover it. So even if they did not meet or exceed the standard of that scale score of 50, we made sure that the juniors, this year seniors would meet the standards. There's lots of debate on, on schools all over on how they handled that. And lots of speculation as far as what it means. This is just the general terminology that we went through last year. The MMR score is what we ended up using because of No Child Left Behind waiver that we got it, that extended. When you're looking at it, there's going to be the four categories proficiency. Did we meet or exceed standards? Growth is taking one year to the next. And this one, as I said before, it's, it's next to impossible for us to sit and figure out how they calculated. I get about 18 steps in and then I get completely confused. Achievement gap reduction, that's the big thing, because No Child Left Behind says that we need to close the achievement gap between our subgroups by half by the year 2017. So that's the big one. If you hit proficiency, your growth should go up and your achievement gap should close. So, you know, that's what we're focusing on. And then the high school graduation rate is going to be another aspect to it. Focus rating is another portion that takes this and here it takes the focus proficiency scores, which is a few more calculations onto the proficiency scores as well as your achievement gap reduction. And here the emphasis is almost exclusively on closing that achievement gap by half. If we're a Title I school, last year we were a reward school. We're in the top 15% of the Title I schools in the state for the elementary as an annual designation. This year, we did very, very well, but we weren't in that top 15. We were just under that, we got celebration eligible. This is kind of odd and David and I have talked about it a lot, because if you're celebration eligible, in our minds, you should just get it. But no, you have to apply for it. And then they will take on all the schools that apply. They figure that there will be 10% out of this 25% that they will call celebration schools. Not sure why they do that. There is a whole group of people that have no designation. There are those that are in continuous improvement, those that are in focus and those that are in priority. So in a two-year time span, we went from focus to reward and we're hovering right in that upper level, which is very much where we'd like to be, but we're not satisfied with what we've completed. Big achievements that we've had in 2014. It was kind of funny this year because everybody in the state is kind of worried about the AYP report. I sent Bob and Lori and David an email and said, I kind of forgot about it and didn't even worry about it, because there was not even a question in my mind whether or not we were going to meet all our categories. Our district, all three of our schools in every subcategory met the standards for every group that we have enough students in to create a cell. So we met our targeted proficiency goals across the board and it wasn't even a concern of ours, because we knew we were on the right track and doing the right things. The elementary school is scoring higher than average in math, reading and science. And we showed an increase in our proficiency scores in math and reading. We're down slightly in science, but we were very, very high last year. And it's negotiable. Middle school as a whole, the scoring was higher than state average in math and reading and stayed the same, or stayed the same. We also see that the MMR score, which we don't get a designation, but for the middle school, it increased by eight percentage points for an annual score that goes across the board. And we don't get that designation category. In the high school, our proficiency were higher than average in reading and science. Our science scores went up very nicely. So that was a concern that we had. And then, as I already said, we've got the celebration eligible the end of October, so it's coming really quickly. I think that's what David gets to spend a good part of MBA or working on. And it's only two questions and we have to be very, very direct as far as how we answer them. And then they've got the grading criteria that's in place. This one you'll probably be interested in and not gonna spend a lot of time looking at it. I took and added, the black numbers are 2013 numbers for ourselves and area districts, and this is in math. The blue numbers are 2014 in looking what we did as far as comparison across the board. And we can, you know, we'll see that way. And I just keep adding to this spreadsheet so that we have that ability to track it, not only for what happened this past year, but where are we going? And it gives that comparison and there are several schools that I meet with and I did the work and we share. So, and they're not even questioning the numbers. So that's the math one. Reading, we've got the same thing. One of the things that we did do or tried to do is break it down. So we've got grade levels that are the same, rather than saying that we have a high school and Eden Valley is listed as a secondary school, which means it's their seven through 12. So we can take and take out their individual grades and make sure we're comparing apples to apples, rather than a secondary school that would include seven through 12 and our, you know, our high school that would include just 10 and 11. And then we have the same thing for science. And those numbers I'm sure you'll want to take some time to look at and they will, it'll all show up in the PowerPoint that you get. Elementary school, oh, that was a reward 2013. I was going to add in there and missed that slide. That celebration eligible. Hopefully, they would help me out in December, we find out. After we turn in the application in December, we'll find out if we're a celebration school or not. Semantics, we're gonna say we're a celebration school, because we're in that category for it. This shows where our proficiency, we're fine in proficiency. Our growth measure, our closing the achievement gap, our numbers are going to be lower this year because we had such a high growth and high change from the year that we were designated as a focus school. We went from an MMR rating of a 14% to a 70-plus percent. And now we're looking at it for our yearly one, it's 57. With the designation that we ended up getting celebration eligible, they decided this year to get a larger sample score. So for those schools that are Title I, they put them together and took two years of score. So we've got our 13 scores and our 14 scores for the designation. And that's what gives us our 68%. With the middle school, we ended up seeing a very large increase in this category, our achievement gap. And this is a yearly, an annual report. We went up eight percentage points, or yes, it's eight percentage points. You can check on math when you get, compare the two and they'll look very similar. High school, we ended up with, we don't have, we don't have a problem with our graduation rate, we don't have anything there. Part of, part of the decrease in score and growth and in achievement gap is going to be credited to the fact that we had the math test being different and we didn't, you know, we didn't have the bite to having them have to meet a requirement to graduate. And I think that might have had a portion to do it. Schools around us, similar, some a little bit more, some a little bit less, but we are in a good percentile. Pretty much when we look across the board and take the very, very large spreadsheet that they've got, they put every school in the state into it. So we have 701 elementary schools that are Title I schools that we're all in the category with, something like that. So, so every building has got a separate score. And when you kind of measure them out, anything in the 60s or higher is going to be something to be proud of. There are schools that are sitting with an MMR score of 8%. And we are well above that in all of our categories. Those are the schools that are going to be priority schools or focus schools. We have schools that didn't end up with any designation that are happy when they show up in an MMR score of 52. We would not be pleased with that or satisfied because we're moving in that upper direction. Some of the things to consider with the 2015. MCA tests will be given last year and this upcoming year, continued in the high school level. We don't know what they're going to do after that. They told us initially we'd be done after this year because of college career and readiness tests were gonna be there. Now they're backtracking a little bit, so we may continue to take the test. The explore test is ACT's practice test and inventory that's given to the eighth graders. The plan is the one to gauge if they're showing growth. And every junior in the state of Minnesota this year in school will be taking the ACT plus writing, just like it would be given anyplace else. And we have an incredible amount of information that we have to make sure and promise and sign my life away that we're going to be able to take care of this. The test, if it's MCA, is all gonna be online this year, so there's no mandated testing dates. Our window is much bigger. Gives us a little bit more flexibility, so we're not displacing classes. And then we still have the ultimate pathway to meeting graduation requirements that don't beat their math and or reading, ASVAB. We took care of all the seniors last year. This year, because all of the juniors are going to be taking the ACT plus writing, that covers it if they don't meet the requirements in reading or math, because it's just juniors, they will all take that test as part of the school. Middle and elementary school, all tests are online. We are looking at it, we're kind of excited about the fact that the optional local purpose assessment, which is pronounced OPLA, but it's not looking like that. We get to take it two times in math and one time in reading. It's the first year that that's gonna be offered, so it's like a practice test. So you can see what it's like, figure out what you're going to be able to do. It's going to, MCA's are gonna continue to be the benchmark for grade levels three through eight. I would not want to be an eighth grader this year because they are gonna get tested to death. They have to take the MCA reading.
Wait one second.
Yep.
We're now at 715, we have parents that are at the school that need to be home and volleyball, so.
They said it would be between 715 and 720. Lori, I don't know if you want to run down on that.
We'll keep on going. I've got about two minutes.
That's okay.
Eighth graders have to take the MCA reading, MCA math, MCA of science and the explore test. The explore test has an aptitude to see what they might like to be when they grow up and it has a reading, math and writing component to it. There's a big difference. The MCA's take as long as you need, do as long as you can. Anything with the, with ACT on it, it is timed. So it is two completely different preparations to get our kids ready. Other things, we've got the months. I do have specific dates, but, and all for that. This one is a big one. We have to give the ACT plus writing to juniors on April 28th. If there's anybody missing, they have one makeup date and we have to, and that is May 12th. And in discussion, they miss it, they miss it. And we can't give it to them as a senior. Pearson is the testing company. The better otherwise, they were the ones that had the poor airs habit. We do know that schools that are trying the OPLA already are running into problems with the online testing. So cross your fingers that they get all the things fixed before we decide to try it. We'll let everybody else be the guinea pig. Test monitors, it's online. It'll be a new company, so we'll figure out what we're gonna do there. The last one is very tough and it's for everybody across the state. Special ed students had the MSA modified for the last few years. Because of No Child Left Behind waiver, they cannot have modified tests. So it will be taken, and it's very unfair. It is just part of what the federal waiver said. No, we're not, we are not gonna guarantee a grade, we're gonna guarantee an opportunity to take the test. And that's, you know, you read it and it goes so much against what educators want to do, provide the best opportunity for success.
So why is the campus fair?
It's, the argument that they have is that it will level the playing field and not give any special consideration because of the designated status. It's ridiculous. I don't understand, no, I don't understand it either, but that's what they've got.
Because aren't you gonna still be, you sound bad in school.
Yes, you are. And every school district in the state is gonna have that same problem. We are going, you know, one of the big things that we'll have to do is make sure that we put in for the waiver, because we have a higher than average percentage of specialized students.
I do hate to interrupt, but.
I'm done.
You're done?
Mm-hmm.
Might be some questions, Don, so if you wouldn't mind hanging around, but I think if we're gonna get our parents down, we're gonna make a motion to go into recess for about 15, 20 minutes.
A motion by David, a second by Mark. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. I believe I can just call it the order again at 7:34. Just look at that, it's a little fear. I think we just call it the order, so we are then finishing questions for, if anybody's got any. Yeah, I think the same thing.
Yeah, one of these I thought we would do is maybe bring Don back at the next meeting.
Yep.
That'll give you a chance to look at all the data and then that would give you a chance also to come up with questions.
Yep.
I'm putting them in right now.
Okay, so if we're done with that, we then will move back to community education director's report. I'll have to come.
We're so close to getting that.
You could have waited for a minute.
All right, good evening. As you saw, the Rose Prize program continues to grow, which is great. So we're seeing good success there. Our winter brochure, we're in the planning stage for that. We have a new AVE teacher, Jay Thompson, will be our new adult basic ed teacher. He'll start November 3rd. He's technically employed, employed through the Wilmer School District who is our consortium host for that, but he will be here at our school. So we're excited about that. We had an incredible local business tour last week with over 50 people. We toured AMPI and St. Precision and it was, everybody's jaws were just dropped the entire time. It was just amazing, the technology and what we have in this community, the automation and just the world-class industry. So that was a great eye-opener. We have Roy Colbert speaking at our coffee conversation tomorrow, sharing his 30-some years experience of working in the St. Cloud Penitentiary. So that'll be an interesting coffee conversation. Met with the representatives from each elementary grade level today to talk about how we can better tell their story. to talk about how we can better tell their story, to make a, almost like a digital brochure or highlight of what sets, pains the area elementary apart. So, we're working on that. And then hopefully you've had a chance to look at the board website. The newest additions, we have Bob on there answering frequently asked questions. And if you peruse it and find things that you, more things you want, that you're getting questions from people in the community or more things that we should have on there, let us know, and we can continue to make changes to that. And an update on the lunch payments online. We are all set technically. They're just waiting for some entry changes for how to enter payments on the kitchen side. So, as far as the program is ready, it's been tested. They just have some, I think they're pretty overwhelmed with new staff in there and getting things going. So, once they're ready, it should be live, and our parents should be able to pay and check their lunch accounts online. Any questions for me?
Yeah. Pre-pause program, do you have different activities that you guys do there? Are those listed for people to look at?
Yep, our staff there does a calendar, monthly calendar for their, for our participants. And we have a lot of choice times. We have activity, outside activities, crafts.
Is that like on the webpage too?
That is not right now, no. That's given to each parent.
Because that'd be kind of cool for parents that are looking at.
Yep, to see what activities. Yeah, we list in general, these are things that we do. But yeah, we could definitely add that, and that's been a work in progress too. So.
Yep, good suggestion.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're to the administrative report. Mr. Hewlett.
Well, everybody's taken all my thunder away from me. Home volleyball game tonight. They've done just an excellent job this year on ASVAB football team. Their last game of the regular season is Wednesday. They have a chance for an undefeated season. So, pretty cool, so the teams are really doing well. I continue to present information about our two questions on the Deloitte. I continue to write articles. I continue to meet at places. I sent an email out to the board just mentioning that on Thursday, 6 to 9, I'll be at the Green Roof, just presenting, I'm not presenting, I'll be at a booth there. So, if anybody's interested, you know, and standing there with me, just let me know, and I'll make sure. No charge for us to do that. I was grateful to hear that, but they did ask for something to be drawn. So, we'll bring a baseball cap there, so that's pretty good. Things are going pretty well with that, I think, right now. I think we're trying to get as much information out to the community as we possibly can. So, as I mentioned in the article that I put in the paper today, we just want our community members to be informed before they go to the polls. We really do, so that's important. I sent you information on the MSBA conference. It is January, Thursday, January 15th and Friday, January 16th. So, right now, if you have not responded back yet or let me know that you're contenting, please do so so I can get the hotel rooms. If you remember the first year, I didn't do it soon enough, and we were kind of split up. But I'd like to get us all in the same hotel that time. We've always had really great responses to that. I think that they've been really good for the board and myself to attend that particular conference. There's also a pre, early board session that's on Wednesday, January 14th. They're both at the same time, so you can only go to one. But one is on bargaining basics, and the other is superintendent evaluation. So, I've already had a couple people that have mentioned it. But if you're interested, just let me know so I can get a hotel room that Wednesday night also. Still working on transportation agreement. I'm going to probably be setting up a committee meeting just to talk over things with the transportation committee next week, just to discuss things. We haven't moved very far. I think that, I'm just not sure where we're going to be in agreement or not on this one. So, I'm going to try to move it along faster, so I'm going to start pushing the question a little bit. As mentioned, the World Best Workforce, we'll be bringing things back to you on that. Working on a new teacher evaluation plan that meets the state requirements. I'm hoping that we can bring that at the next board meeting. Just, it really started with our current plan and built into the requirements of the, of the new legislation, legislation on that, and also our eye observation plan. So, it's all combined. The teachers will be looking at it hopefully this week and for the next week. They do have need to vote on it first. If we can't come to agreement, then we fall back to the state plan, which I don't think anybody really wants to do. So, we'll get the teachers first to agree to it, and then we'll come to the board for approval. So, I'd really like to get that done by the end of this, this month if possible. Met with the ministerial group today. They just reminded us about Wednesdays not having any more activities. I think they've been very happy with Matt's providing them with updates. You know, we've had a lot of weather problems last couple of years, so we've had to reschedule a lot. Some of those have had to be done on Wednesdays for, just because there were no other dates. But they've been very happy with the way that's going. And of course, they prefer not to have a lot of homework, you know, on those nights so that the students don't have to go to their classes and then also have a lot of homework. So, we had a very good discussion, a very positive discussion today with the ministerial group. Let's see, what else? Newsletter, we've always put out a newsletter at this time of the year, but it's really become redundant, and we don't think that it's really doing what it needs to do. So, what we're going to do is we're going to change a little bit, and we're going to try one with incentive out Matt's newsletter. It'll save us a little bit of money. At the same time, I think we're going to just try to put the very, the very important information that they want out, which is usually the schedule for the next season, is what the community wants. And we think it'll get out to more community members because I believe Matt has mailed to everybody, right?
Correct.
It's direct mail to all household. So, we're going to just take a couple pages on that, see how it goes, and then we'll decide what we're going to do in the future. If it's not beneficial to people we're sending it to, then we need to find a different way. At the same time, I think we'll get some articles put on our website, and we'll refer to that in the pages in Matt's, Matt's document to look to the website to get some of that other information that we typically put in the newsletter. So, we're going to look at some different ways of doing things than what we've done before. Certainly, when you take a look at the test scores, there are going to be some areas that we're doing very well in and some areas that we need to continue to improve on. And that's part of why we look at the data all the time is to decide what we're doing well and decide what we really do need to change or focus on or do differently. You can't continue to do things the same way if they're not coming out the way that you want them to come out. You need to look at changing things at that point. Any questions for me?
No questions. Do we have other sharing of the board?
Well, I'm just going to let everybody know that the MSBA delegate assembly is in December. So, if you have any things you want brought before that group, you have to have them turn in before November. So that, because the pre-delegate assembly meetings are the second week, most of only the second week of November. And that's when they decide which ones will move forward to the delegate assembly.
Like a sample of what?
Resolution, yeah, resolutions of what you want to. The, it's, what you, what the assembly meeting is for is what you want the MSBA to let, to lobby for as the legislative group representing your school.
For instance, I just read an article from New London, and what they're really trying to get is more equity funding taken care of. So, that certainly might be something. It's a political piece particularly for MSBA because they have a number of groups in the metro that would prefer it stays just the way it is. But it's certainly not fair.
There's always, it seems like there's been, at least one or two schools, a lot of those resolutions of ours started with the C organization, and they'll have a member group bring it to the delegate assembly, or bring it to the pre-delegate assembly meetings.
So, are we going to join them in London and maybe bring something to this delegation?
Yeah, I think one of the things I can do is all talk with the superintendent over there, and we'll have a discussion on how they're going to word their recommendation, what they're looking for. I think it would fit very well into our situation here also.
So, how many rural schools would be interested?
Well, I think anybody that was in that donor hole that isn't getting the equity funding, I think where you run into the issues where they don't necessarily want things changed is when you get to that metro route, because they get quite a bit more money than we do, you know, so.
But the thing is, when it gets to the delegate assembly, the resolution, if someone, the school puts forth the resolution, like New London says that, or has one going, is discussed at the pre-delegate assembly meetings, and then it has to be brought to the floor, the delegate assembly. What's happened in the past is if schools don't work together, they'll have someone bring a resolution to the floor, and then if nobody seconds it, it dies. Right there, it never, it never even gets talked about. If they can have a school that's willing to back, back them up, some or another, even any delegate person can open back and second them, the resolution, then at least there's discussion on it. And even if the resolution doesn't pass, what happens is a lot of times the discussion will go on, and they'll come up with a different way because you can, they'll change it or reword it or whatever. It's, it's a, sometimes it gets to be a real long process. But if we don't keep bringing it, the equity issue before, it's like he says, it just gets drunk because there are more larger schools than there are rural.
But if there was a flood of those coming in from a bunch of the small schools?
Well, that's.
I guess my question is that it's a serious enough issue for a small school like us trying to figure out how to compete with the metro schools and not get the dollars from the state. And from all that I've read, the constitution of the state says that equal education for kids in Minnesota.
So, only one of two things that it says the state's constitution says you have to do.
So, does that mean that maybe we take a front end? Or maybe the New London helps us, and then we contact a bunch of other schools so that it doesn't look like we're old Rangers?
Yeah, that's all, that's all. Eric Williams Holyford started the push last year for that equal funding visa. Helped very much with the $300 and being able to come up and be able to levy the maximums of 724 without it going to order approval.
That's what I was trying to get, thank you, I couldn't remember his name. It starts with a resolution, an idea of equity. And then the discussion at the, at the floor down there ends up with, I remember that, lots of discussion. And they tried to, without, to figure out a way to make it, but, but like so many things down at the Capitol. There's winners and losers and everything. And so, in that one, they missed a hole in the middle of it. There was people above and people below, and then there was us in the middle. That it didn't go far enough to help. Either had to be, I don't even know, you had to either be so bad or so good.
Yeah, example, the legislation never helped us one bit because we were right at 723. So, it didn't help us. We were right where they brought it up to. I'll certainly call them, I just read the article today, so I'll always just call them and find out how they're going to proceed with that.
It's just like we can sit and just watch it kind of fade away and all of that. Or do we take a front end and get Eric and all these other schools to join in with us? Because the one thing that's happening is the metro schools have lots of population. Most of their population in the metro came from rural Minnesota. When the kids graduated, they went down there fully educated, and now we're on the short end of the stick. I just don't buy that. And I don't know how we, how we get back to that. I just don't think the legislators are giving us the time, and I don't think we're getting what we need. But for one major thing, that is a big thing for our rural schools, all of us.
And New London belongs, I believe, to the C program, so also, so.
But St. Cloud, I think, has got out of, got out.
Right, but St. Cloud C is in a different position than we're at. I would say probably St. Cloud might be on the other side of that coin.
Yeah, well, if it were to be on the other side, there's a lot more trouble we have.
They weren't always so because for years they were involved because they, they hosted lots of regional meetings in St. Cloud. But when they had enough, when they got enough growth in their city that they had a larger schools, the coin flipped, and they're out of it. Because just like there's groups that will help small schools, there's groups that are all to help the metro schools. I don't understand why, but they do.
My advice stands to me, they should all get what they need to do, what they need to do.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be competing with the charter.
I don't have another thing. We are an open seat on the board this year. So, when it comes to registering for the, the meeting, is it possible to register? I don't know where everybody's at on that, to register for extra rooms to pull people together? Because we're going to fill it.
There will be seven board members. If all seven board members say they're going to go all get seven rooms for those board members, the rooms can change, and I believe that I'd also.
But you're only going to hear from six. Because why not?
I'll, if, well, I need a way for everybody else. I will give rooms for everybody that wants to apply, and if, I think that there's a need for one other room, you can cancel the rooms fairly quickly, and the registration you can bring up for. I'll, if the board.
That would be my only job.
If the board's okay with that, I'll, I'll take care of it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn. Aye. Lou, second by Cheryl. On favor, say aye.
Aye.